Call this evening's meeting to order. This is a regular city council meeting for Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. Can I have a roll call, please?
Um, Councilman Carter.
I am here.
Mayor Protem Davy.
Here.
Mayor Gillis.
Here.
Councilwoman Harris.
Here.
Councilwoman Meldrum.
Here.
Councilman Scarborough.
Here.
And I'm going to excuse Councilman Bevus because he's out of town.
All in favor of excusing Councilman Bevus?
Aye.
Any opposed? Can we have a moment of silence? Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Comments, questions, concerns? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. We have Mr. Curtis McBride from McBride Manley. He's going to give us an update on his audit services. Mr. McBride?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Curtis McBride. I'm a CPA for McBride Manley Company. Uh, we are the firm that audits the city of Algonex financial statements. So as all of you know, you received a letter from our firm in, back in June to let you know that we have started the planning phase of our audit. So we send that communication directly to all of you council members, directly to your houses. So that's to let you know that we've started the audit. Obviously, those here at, at City Hall, you know Denise and Alicia are aware because we're here on site doing our fieldwork. So that's to alert you that we've started our audit. Also, um, that letter is really a way to really invite you to communicate with us if you have any questions or concerns, and that's something we're actually required to send out as part of our auditing standards. So we send that letter out to all of our audit clients, not just the city of Algonex. So that's the primary purpose of, of that communication that you should have received back in June. And just to give you a heads up, at the completion of our audit, obviously you'll get the financial statements and our full audit report, but you'll also get a letter that looks similar to the one that you received back in June. So that's the one we send at the conclusion of our audit, and that's essentially to let you know that we've concluded our audit. And it gives us a chance to, you know, express or let you know if we had any issues throughout the course of, of the audit, and I don't anticipate any. You know, obviously historically, um, you know Denise and Alicia have been very cooperative with us throughout the course of our audit, but that's really what the purpose of that communication that you'll be receiving, and I expect you probably to receive that probably the end of December or beginning of January of two thousand twenty-six, is when I don't anticipate that. And I do talk about this when I give my audit presentation typically every January, but just to reiterate what we do as part of our audit. So first and foremost, we are independent of the city. So we are the city auditor with a department of the treasurer's department. Um, and maintaining that independence is critical in order for us to effectively complete our audit. In other words, we can't audit our own work. So we have to be very careful about what level of services we're performing for the city. You know, we need to basically make sure we're only performing our auditing services. So if you guys remember from last year's presentation, our planning phase, which is what we started really around July 4th, I think it was right after the holiday. So for that phase, all we're doing is looking at samples of transactions. So we look at the major accounting functions. So we're looking at purchasing, which is a big one, obviously, for the city. We're looking at cash receipts, utility billing, payroll's a big one. Um, so we're looking at samples of transactions to see how they are all affecting the city's accounting system. And as part of that process, we're assessing risk as part of our audit. So what we do in that first phase, in that planning phase, will actually drive what we do in the next phase of our audit, which we're actually starting this week, ironically. Um, that really drives the procedures that we perform now in our second phase. So, you know, there are things that we may run into or find in that planning phase that will impact the second phase of our audit. So we custom, there are some audit procedures we have to perform under our auditing standards, and then there's others that we customize based on your risk. So the city of Algonex has its own unique risks. Every audit client has its own risk. So it doesn't matter who they are, um, but, but obviously every client is different. Every municipality is different, so they have their own set of risks. Um, so just a reminder, that's what, that's what we do in the planning phase. And then the second phase, right now, we're actually reconciling the year-end balances independently in order to complete those financial statements and then render that audit opinion that you should have sometime in December or January. So, um, that's essentially the summary of our services. There's a lot more that goes into that.
Oh, yeah.
Um, you know, like I said, our, our planning phase really begins in June and July, and we're here on site for several days, and then we actually do a significant amount of work offsite. And that typically, uh, ends, we, we usually typically finish that service in about December or, or January. So, any questions for?
Is it common practice that the auditor, um, records the filed of financial statements or, um, what you're working on right now? Is that an accountant that should be actually doing those?
Yeah, so, so to answer your question, the preparation of the actual financial statements. So that is common, um, and it is allowed for the auditor to assist in the preparation of those financial statements. In fact, I would say it's even common, um, for a community the size of the city of Algonex for that to be the case.
Is it recommended that an auditor also account, be our accountant?
Um, that, that's not an accounting service.
What about, I mean, like where it says that you made your, um, and the city relies, reliance on the auditor's expertise and experience to prepare the GAAP financial statements?
Correct.
Okay, that's not an accountant function?
That is not.
Um, like the other question, is a lack of segregation of duties over key accounting processes? Can you give me some examples of those?
Sure. So, um, that one, I would say is also a common issue with a city the size of the city of Algonex. So for instance, you have a city treasurer, so let's say your city treasurer is making adjusting journal entries to the accounting records. If you don't have a, a second person, a qualified second person, to review those entries and understand why they were made, and if, if whether or not they were appropriate, then that presents a risk, which is why we've identified it there. So that would be, falls under a lack of segregation of duties uh, because you don't have a second person able to review those adjustments.
Do we have a second person who's capable to understand what they're approving when it comes to those general entries?
I would say currently, no.
No. Does it state in your, the June thirtieth, that the auditor does make significant adjustments to the general ledger, provides assistance in preparing the complete set of financial statements? Is it common that auditors do the general entries for a municipality?
Yeah, so, so auditors can propose audit journal entries. So as long as the city is able to, um, if you have someone on staff who's willing to accept them. So in other words, this is different than the segregation of duties. Segregation of duties is, you don't have more than one person, but if you have someone internally here who can understand the audit adjusting journal entries that we're proposing to your accounting records and accept them and make them to the accounting records, then that is acceptable.
But we don't have that person at this time?
You don't have the second person.
Right, second person.
Right, but that's different than the one you, that you're identifying.
So would you, would you recommend or would you think that the city could utilize an accounting finance services to help guide the finance department? With the account, with the accounting back part of it?
Sure, I, I would say ideally that whether, whether it's an, an accounting firm to assist with accounting, or if it's one individual who almost acts as a mentor, who does have experience municipal accounting, who can review that information, that would be ideal, yes.
I have no further questions.
Does anybody else have any questions, Mr. McBride?
And, and just to reiterate, tho- those are common issues in municipalities.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I work for a municipality, I'm aware of the deficiency letters, and they're most common. I know that we do have a segregation of duties. I know it's mentioned that we're a small office. Um, the charter country of East China is even smaller. We only have three full-time staff. We have a bookkeeper, a receivable clerk, and myself, and we are, there is a segregation of duties. And the person who does approve the general entries does understand the process. So I think even though we're a small community, I think it would just be helpful to have an accounting service on hand, not employed full-time or close, but just to kind of work towards these deficiencies that we're seeing, even though they're little. And I know that every municipality has them at a certain extent. But I know that it's, we go back to that we're a small office.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. McBride.
Thank you, sir, it was good to see you, thank you.
At this time, council, I'm going to invite up Andy Galley, the president of the Algonex Lions, in the presentation for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Um, on behalf of the Algonex Lions Club, first of all, congratulations on getting the long-awaited construction of the pool done, and everything looks really great. Um, Mayor Gillis came to our club, uh, talking about furniture for the pool. And, um, and looking back, um, the Algonex Lions Club had the field and the pool. Um, they had the field where, when the high school was downtown, um, that's where all the football games, baseball games, track, everything happened there. And in the late fifties, the club built, maintained the staff to the pool for the children in the community and for all of these things. Our club has always been mostly about doing things for the youth in our community. And so when Mayor Gillis came to us with the issue of furniture, we of course, um, were happy to do that. And, uh, so, uh, like to present you with a check for fifteen thousand dollars.
Turn down, guys, turn down, I'm coming down.
Thank you, sir. That's going.
All right, cheers, everybody.
Cheers.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
This will be for you. Congratulations on a great art fair.
Thank you, y'all, that was fun.
Thank you, the Algonex Lions, and, uh, and I think we have, what, Lion Jacob here? Mike Gaddy? Your husband's a member of Algonex Lions?
Yeah.
Appreciate the donation. We will now move into public comment. You will have five minutes to speak before the council. Um, council may not respond, but we will be listening to and responding at any time during the meeting.
Hi, my name's Alan Lapham. I live at one nine six zero Lebault. I'm here to request my, uh, bond return from a building permit. Um, building permit number P is in Paul, B is in Boyd, two two zero zero two three. Um, it was rejected at one time because we were required to have city sidewalks with all new builds, but now that's not the case anymore, and I don't, it doesn't connect to either side of my house. It would be this three thousand dollar chunk of concrete that doesn't connect to anything. There's no sidewalk on the property on either side, so I was wondering if I could get that refunded? And, uh, anything else, do I have to?
Mrs. Gersonberg, could you follow up on that?
Absolutely, Mayor Gillis.
You're all set?
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Alicia, can you hand her?
Thank you, Mayor, am I okay right here?
Yeah, you want the microphone?
No, well, I was trying to.
We can hear you, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I have recently been told that I'm going to be up to five, which is a good thing, but I would have to have a modified vehicle. What I'm looking at right now is a EV because I figure it's going to be easier for me than gassing up a vehicle. Before I bring it to my condo association, I want, I guess, a confirmation that Governor Whitmer's energy bill is implemented right now, Bill five zero two eight.
Aye.
I'm going to respond real quick, just because I do have your information, and I, and I'm looking into it.
Oh.
Yeah, because I'm, okay, I'm, because I'm like.
So I'm going to look into it and get, get the opinion.
Okay, I'd be very happy to make it easier for you if you would like.
Sure.
Okay, and that, that's it.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. This is a summary of the bill that goes behind it. And I put two front pages, for some reason, they've locked out some of that, so you could see it all. I put two pages.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Hope everything works out.
Oh, I do too.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none?
Hi, my name's Lauren Claris, six six nine, Compton, Cor. And I think I'm here on behalf of a lot of Algonex other residents. We're in shock over the water bill, because the rate, um, the increase, substantial increase. No heads-up notice, no flyers sent with the water bill, no letting us know ahead of time in what they're doing what they want. Why the hike is so huge, and I believe it's fifty percent for the sewer, twenty percent for the water. I'm asking a question because I'm used to getting a heads-up about things like that. But here in Algonex, everyone's floored in a major increase, and how that went over our heads like that, and we feel it's not good.
Okay. Again, we don't back and forth, so we'll address later, this time. So if there's any, you know, I didn't watch, if, if, there's no, we don't back and forth.
Yeah, it's not that we're just low down, we will address it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Doug Biel from five oh five Lathrop. Um, I kind of echo her comments there. Would have been nice to have a, uh, some kind of forewarning letter explaining there's going to be an increase and for this reason, um, you know, that's a bit of a shocker. The taxing too was kind of nice for a while, but I understand errors happen, but, you know, um, just, you know, it seemed like the communication things. Um, I've, uh, you know me from our old drain, um, issue that we had for many years on Lathrop. And unfortunately, I've been off medical issues and haven't had the strength to get back into it, but I intend to summarize the situation, and, uh, we need to decide on Lathrop what our next steps are there. And very disappointed after years of patients and engineering studies, we get a legal letter that says privately, you can't go on it. We had the same problem with our street years ago until we found the documentation to show that the street was deeded back to the city, and we had to show that a couple times. So I'm really hoping that this gets some attention. Um, I'm feeling stronger now where I can start getting back into it. I'm going to summarize the situation from my perspective, and hopefully we can work out a solution and we can get some guidance, um, that works okay for both of us, um, rather than, you know, attorneys fighting amongst each other and such.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Natalie. I live at four forty Lathrop, as many of you may know. Uh, don't worry, I'm not here to talk about, uh, anything that, you know, everybody might think I would talk about. Um, I've got our sense of issues, but, you know, happy to be here. I love my neighbors and where I live. Um, but most importantly, my, my group of friends, uh, which actually happens to be a group of senior citizen ladies that kind of took me under their wing when I first moved here. Um, went to the library, joined cookbook club, became friends with a group of ladies that have invited me to their homes, they've invited me to luncheons. Um, and, you know, a lot of those ladies are retired, they're living on social security. Some of them are more well-off than others. Um, and I'm kind of, again, echoing what everybody else said about the water bills, um, large increase. And, you know, looking back at the meeting that was had on the twentieth, there was a lot of reasons given as far as, well, there hasn't been an increase since, you know, two thousand thirteen, or, you know, one of the things that Josh came up here and said was, if this would have been addressed a long time ago, we could have been, we could be looking at this differently, and this could be structured differently. Um, that makes me very upset. And it doesn't make me necessarily upset for myself because I live in a house where we both work. We don't have any kids. We're relatively fortunate in, in that way that we looked at the increase and said, yeah, that's, you know, not ideal, but it's o- it's okay, we understand. Um, but what about everybody else? You know, what about the ladies that I'm friends with that are living by social security check, paycheck to, or whatever, check to check? What about them? Um, so I'm up here for them. I'm up here for every senior citizen and anybody who's having a hard time in this community. We've got blessing boxes everywhere that are consistently filled and then empty immediately after. We've got people on Facebook that are begging for food and basic necessities, and I'm here on behalf of everybody because though it may not directly impact me as much as it does them, you can't forget about those people. And, you know, another interesting thing is, well, we can, you know, we can't do this and that because it would deplete the general fund, we'd be in a huge deficit, all this stuff. So essentially, we don't have the money for it as a city, right? Well, what about when people say, I don't have the money for this? I don't have the money to, to pay this bill? You've got somebody who's eighty-five years old that can't afford a bill that's increased, you know, I, I read ninety percent. And if somebody can let me know, I know we can't do, you know, communication back and forth. But I read ninety percent, so I, I'd like to know what exactly those increases are. Um, another thing that I wanted to say too, and this is just ba- based on my observation, the water bill had a bunch of, you know, pierogi fest and kielbasa and all types of stuff on the back, but there was, again, no, like everybody else said, no notice on there. Let's start putting the notices on there. Let's start sending letters out. Let's start putting together infographics, which I'd be happy to prepare. And let's get those out where it's little pictures with everything that people need to know, and it's broken down in a really simple, easy, quick way to read. If this stuff has to happen, let's at least be transparent with the public about it. That's, that's, at least at, at the minimum. Um, I guess that's it, thank you.
Thanks, Natalie.
Anyone else? And also, when somebody's speaking, there's no other speaking in the room, please. I know some of you, it's your first meeting.
Greg Loggins, four five zero Lathrop. Again, with the water bill, um, it's probably maintenance. And, uh, it seems like it was a lack of maintenance on you guys' part over the course of these ten, twelve years, and then all of a sudden it gets dropped on everybody at once, instead of a little bit here and there, you know? So when you plan your stuff out, plan the maintenance correctly, instead of all let it come off at once, you know? It ain't, it ain't a bad deal, you got to maintain your home as well as you got to do your city. The other thing is, you guys are maintaining, uh, some trees today. And, uh, you know, we pay a lot in taxes. If you guys need a broom, I'll, I'll donate a broom to you. But if you go down the street right now, there's leaves and twigs all over it. All they did was throw the big stuff into the grinder and left all the rest. Looks like crap, I'll tell you that. And that was just coming here on my bicycle. Now, let's get to the taxes. The taxes, you guys can't figure taxes out. Everybody's coming to pay taxes, and then you say, oh, man, we made a mistake. How do you make a mistake? That's your income. Am I right or wrong? You know, you guys figure that out. So I don't know, you guys, I drop in the ball a lot. And the other thing is, uh, I, I sort of dropped the ball. I put a patio in, then pull a permit, I pull permits for everything. They charge me an extra fifty bucks, pull, get the permit, charge you extra fifty. Where's that fifty bucks go? You guys eat lunch on it, go to the bar? What do you do? Nobody, I, I've asked that a million times, where does the penalty go? So if you can figure that out by the next meeting, or drop me a line, let me know where that fifty bucks went. I'd like to have a beer with you guys too on it, mine, you know? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Ron Curry. I live five one seven Lathrop. Um, I have the same concerns about the water bill. I also have the same concerns that Doug voiced on the storm sewer on Lathrop. Um, I'm very frustrated that it hasn't been taken care of. I'm also disappointed, my wife and I, we've enjoyed being in this community for a long time, but we just watch it, we see the pharmacies leaving, we see businesses leaving, we no longer have the dry cleaners in town. It just seems like of all the waterfront communities that are here, St. Clair, Marine City, New Baltimore, everybody's going in great direction, and it just seems like we aren't. So I just wanted to let you know, we've got a great street, we've got great neighbors. That's the only thing that's keeping us in this community right now. Otherwise, we would put our house up for sale and leave. So I just wanted to let some people know.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Robert Tramm, he too hit Clay Street. Yeah, I'd just like to say a reference to the water and the taxes and stuff. My whole thing with it is, it's like, you know, I've, I've lived here since nineteen eighty-one. I've never had any issues. I pretty much get along with everybody, but my whole thing is, it's just like, you know, there's a lot of people here that are selling, they want to sell their houses and move elsewhere and stuff because of the tax increase, which is, it pretty much stinks, but, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm hanging in there, but I got to tell you, I've been, I've been looking into it too just because it's getting to be a little, little too much. You know, I can always work more than sixty hours, which I work now, but I'm trying not to, so. I'm just saying, I got a little problem with that, so I'm kind of in reference to what they were saying, you know? But, um, that's about it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Seeing managers report, Mrs. Gersonberg?
Thank you, Mayor Gillis. Um, the u- u- update on the Algonex Elementary Housing Project. MISHDA has released new criteria for the October first funding application date. MISHDA appears to be limiting the next round of funds to specific locations. We have an upcoming, um, discussion scheduled with MISHDA for more information. An update on the Algonex Activity Center. Fire alarm system will not be installed until September, so this month. H-back is complete, we're still installing the ceiling tiles. Piece-to-piece quilters is working on their new lighting and flooring. The door latches for access control will be installed at the end of September, and we are nearing finalization of our lease agreement between these quilters in the city. Um, update on the pool. The pool, oh, the pool heater is operational and has passed all state inspections. The former completed a pressure test on the gas line with the building official present. All the other punch list items have been completed except for the sub pumps. The pool overflow drain needs to be piped into the sump basin, and the electrician is going to come out and look at the vortex control system, and we are looking into a pool cover, which we will be needing for the winter. Um, smoke testing has been completed, they did eight total days of smoke testing. We are in the process of reviewing the results, and we'll have that to council shortly. That's all I had, Mayor Gillis, thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Mrs. Gersonberg? Seeing none? Moving on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the regular minutes of August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Can I have a motion, please?
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we're going to be moving on to item, new, new business item A, to adopt amendment to chapter forty-eight, Waterways, by getting section three, Vessel Parking. The city of Algonex Riverfront Park is a popular destination for voters, residents, and visitors to keep waterfront parks safe, fair, and enjoyable for everyone. The following new docking rules are proposed. The following new docking rules are proposed. A five-hour limit for parking, docking, or mooring along the seawall. No docking north of Wapu Island Ferry Dock, as it's a Coast Guard area. Allowed between seven AM and ten PM only, unless you have permission from the city. No overnight docking without prior approval. Vessels over twenty-five feet must use mooring bowlers, not railings or benches. Boaters must bring their own lines, fenders, secure vessels, and are responsible for any damage. These rules help share limited space, protect park property, and keep the waterfront safe. The introduction of this ordinance was approved at the August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to amend, excuse me, I'll make a motion to adopt amendment to chapter forty-eight Waterways by adding section three vessel parking.
Comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Davy?
Yes.
Mayor Gillis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Meldrum?
Yes.
Councilman Scarborough?
Yes.
Alright, moving on. We're gonna move on to item eleven B, is to adopt article ten, short-term rental ordinance as part of chapter ten Buildings and Building Regulation of the City Code. Elginak scenic riverfront in proximity to an international border make it a popular destination for visitors and a growing number of homes are being offered as short-term rentals. While these rentals can benefit the local economy, they can create challenges such as neighborhood impacts, increased traffic, parking shortages, and noise. Safety concerns, unexpected or unrededulated rentals may lack proper fire safety equipment, secure exits, or adequate occupancy limits. Community limits, without limits, short-term rentals constrain certain neighborhoods, reducing the available housing for long-term residents. While Elginak adopted and established a housing, rental housing in twenty twenty, this new ordinance specifically addresses challenges associated with short-term rentals. This ordinance is designed to allow short-term rentals while protecting the character, safety, and quality of life in Elginak neighborhoods. It requires annual registration and inspections to ensure safety and code compliance, clear local contact information for quick responses to complaints or emergencies, occupancy and parking limits to reduce neighborhood disruptions, enforcement and penalties for repeated violations. By setting consistent rules, the city can welcome visitors while ensuring that short-term rentals remain safe while maintaining and respectful of residents. The introduction of this ordinance was approved at August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Based on comments received at the August nineteenth meeting, followed with staff discussion, the city rental inspector will regularly share the list of registered short-term rentals with the St. Clair County Sheriff. The sheriff will regularly check these properties for compliances with city ordinances. In addition, while parking will be limited to approved areas, parking passes may be available for off-site overflow parking at Smithsburg area to feel a lot behind Eric Green. The annual license registration fees were closed for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six as proposed at two hundred dollars plus an annual inspection fee of eighty dollars. And I have a motion, please.
To make a motion to adopt article ten, short-term rental ordinance as part of chapter ten Buildings and Building Regulations of the City Code and amend the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, these schedules presented.
For comments, questions, concerns?
Mr. Harris?
Yes, sir.
I think that this is a good start. I know that there are areas where there's some issues. This is a good start, and I would ask anyone who is, because it's, there's a lot more of them these days. And if you can look at this and see that there are things that we may should address further down the line, please feel free. I don't live, I don't have any, so I don't have a clue of what it's like to live here, here in B. Especially for, you know, like, over in the point where, you know, good luck, try to get, you know, car down, some of those areas. So, like I said, please feel free to toss things that you think may be key to us. And that's all I have.
Mrs. Gersenberg, the additional parking permits and stuff like that, so that's so if there's cars on the road, the sheriff's gonna knock up door and say, hey, can you park these over here?
Thank you, Mayor Gillis. Yes, we've had discussions with the sheriff that they need to maintain and make sure that emergency vehicles can get through at all times. And sometimes we're having some issues like these VRBIs and Airbnb's with making it difficult going down the roads. And so the sheriff, as well as the rental inspector in the city, will have some of these parking passes and be able to say, hey, I need you guys to go move behind Eric Green because there's just not enough room here.
And if I could, so that's, but that's all the responsibility of the owner of the property to make sure that tenants are well aware of this. And they'll have to sign something when they do all of this to make sure that they understand it fully.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Davy?
Yes.
Mayor Gillis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Meldrum?
Yes.
Councilman Scarborough?
Yes.
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Moving on to item eleven C, is to approve server and server room upgrades. The process for server and server room upgrade is a comprehensive replacement and cleanup project. This will include a new server, Microsoft Windows license and setup, migration services, data backup configurations, IT server room cleanup, also warranty and support coverage. The current server has reached the end of service life. These services will be provided by the current IT provider, HI-Tech. The upgrade was budgeted for in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. Can I have a motion, please?
To make a motion to approve server and server room upgrade from HI-Tech, whose address is thirty seventy Palms Road, in the amount of nineteen thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars.
Or comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none. Could I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Gillis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Meldrum?
Yes.
Councilman Scarborough?
Yes.
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Davy?
Yes.
Alright, motion carry. Moving on to item eleven D, is to approve firewall upgrade. Earlier this year, the city began experiencing internet connectivity and reliability issues that were traced to the failing and outdated firewall. A firewall is a critical component of cybersecurity, serving to protect the city's network from external threats, regulate incoming and outgoing traffic, and maintain compliance with security standards. When the existing firewall began to fail, the city's IT provider supplied a temporary lower device to ensure the continuity of operations. However, a permanent replacement is now necessary. The proposed new firewall will provide stronger security, improved reliability, and enhanced capacity to meet the city's future technology needs without replacement. The city faces the risk of system outages and increased vulnerability to cyber threats. The proposed new firewall was anticipated and included in the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve firewall upgrades from HI-Tech, whose address is thirty seventy Palms Road, in the amount of three thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Alright. Comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Harris? Councilwoman Meldrum?
Yes.
Councilman Scarborough?
Yes.
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Davy?
Yes.
Mayor Gillis?
Yes.
Moving on to accounts payable.
To make a motion to approve accounts payable and payroll in the amount of one million, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and six dollars and sixty-three cents.
For comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Meldrum?
Yes.
Councilman Scarborough?
Yes.
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Davy?
Yes.
Mayor Gillis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris?
Yes.
I have your next agenda. Mrs. Gersenberg?
Thank you, Mayor Gillis. Right now, we just have boards and commissions, appointments and reappointments, and pay application number one for the North Elm and Chestnut pavement rehabilitation program.
Thank you. Council comments? Nope. Councilman Carter?
Thanks, everyone, for coming. A big thank you to the Elginak Lions for the gift, for the pool furniture. And also, they were involved in the car show and art festival. And our councilwoman Harris was involved in that. It was a great event, lots of fun for everyone, and just a great thing for our community. School's back in session. It's important everybody to look out for the kids. I noticed this morning, as I was headed to the gym early, the kids, it was still kind of dark, and the kids were out playing around and running in the streets. So let's be careful and watch out for our kids, too.
Mayor Pro Tem Davy?
I mean, I want to address a couple of things. First of all, yeah, a ball got dropped that should not have been. I mean, I've heard from a lot of people, my husband for one, who, when he opened the water bill and didn't quite realize that that was going to come. A ball just dropped that should have been dropped. Everybody should have thought that this is coming. I mean, the rate increases were discussed, and they're not, it's not ninety percent. I do want to toss that out. It's not ninety percent. I've seen that put out there a couple of times. That was a rate that had been discussed during one of the budget sessions. But it's, it's not ninety percent, but that rate increase still hurts. I mean, I didn't vote this to throw on, we did not vote this to throw at everybody. It's all us, like I said. I had to hear some stuff from my husband as well. I, it should have, there should have been flyer. And like I said, there isn't nothing that I can say other than a ball dropped that I thought of. I do want to mention, Mrs. Gersenberg, the water bill that we got, this billing cycle, you and I had discussed it, of when the date was, when that cycle began. And you had said that there had been, they had figured in those twenty-two days when they did the bill. My concern is that the next billing cycle is not gonna have those twenty-two days at a lower rate. Could we please make sure that we send something out to residents? I'd say the bill's probably gonna be a little bit higher because it's gonna be the full billing cycle that is gonna be on that bill. So can we please send something out to the residents to help, please?
Mrs. Gersenberg?
Thank you, Mayor Gillis. Mayor Pro Tem Davy, would you have something printed on the water bill? Is that what you're saying?
Well, water bills already went out. But to give them, yeah, but by the time they get the water bill, they're gonna, our first thing they're gonna see is, it went up again, and then that's a whole other thing. If we can send out mailers, something to let people know, you know, look cars, something to make sure that, because it's gonna be higher. I mean, there's, I'm wrong.
No, you're not wrong.
No, it's, you're, but, you know, this communication, and I understand the frustration. I don't mean to interrupt your.
No, go ahead, please.
I understand the frustration with communication. There is multiple ways it's been communicated, but I think if we all, if a ball dropped, it was on every one of us because the public elected us to inform them of what was happening. We made the best decision we could. As far as the notification, yeah, we, but, but I don't know if there's a good way to communicate with anybody anymore. If you say paper mail, okay, I can tell you right now, something goes in my paper mail, I throw it away. You say email, certain people don't read them. It's hard. The communication thing's hard. That's all I'm gonna say on that one.
Well, and I understand your point, but we were able to let everybody know about smoke testing. You know what I mean? It's our job to make sure that everybody knows the best that we can. Especially over something like this. Because this is, like I said, this is a big deal. I had to listen to my husband for two days. And then my sixteen-year-old, he had to listen to because you're only taking a shower two days a week. I apologize. It will not happen again. And I'm gonna try to make sure that it doesn't happen again. And, um, that's all I have.
Councilwoman Harris?
Yep. On behalf of Chris, Rob, and I, I wanna thank everyone that participated and helped us out for successful Elginak Art Fair. It was, it was a huge success. We had beautiful weather and many vendors. I wanna thank the Elginak Lions Club for the pool furniture. I also wanna chime in on the water. Yep, there's the billing cycle went from six nine to eight eleven. This is my water bill. And there are twenty-one days that are gonna be higher at this next billing period. And I knew we were gonna have a rate increase. I didn't know it was gonna be on this bill. That would have been helpful. I would have posted it on Facebook because most people go there. There are many different places it could have gone. Could have gone on the city of Elginak website, could have gone, there's many places. On the back of the water bill, something should have been done, and it wasn't. And we apologize. I'm really sorry. I wasn't happy. I got mine, and I don't like it. So I already know that this next one is gonna be twenty-one days higher from the rate increase that we had from June ninth to June thirtieth when we started the billing cycle July first. That's it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Meldrum?
I have to piggyback a little bit on Harrison, Mayor Pro Tem Davy. First, I want to thank everybody for coming out and voicing your concerns regarding the utility bill, tax bill. We all understand the frustration. And again, with comment on Mayor Gillis, you know, we're responsible. We did approve the budget. We did approve those rates. But I did not know when they were gonna go into effect. So I think maybe a heads up would have been helpful that they were going to affect on this bill. And there would be twenty-one days of the old or twenty-two days at the new. I know the bills are a little confusing because you have a water usage, a sewer usage, a capital, a sewer debt, and, and the usage fee, I believe, and maybe correct me if I'm wrong, City Manager Gersonberg, the water usage is based on a usage fee, and then there's a flat fee that's rolled into that total to give the full amount.
Do you need a permit server charge?
Yeah. Okay, so would, would I be safe to say then, like, on the water usage, at your eight thousand gallons, you would throw in the flat fee, right? Right, okay. So I think if maybe if we kind of had that spelled out on the utility bill, what the usage rate is per thousand gallon, what consists of a capital sewer service flat or the sewer capital charge of the flat fee of thirty, we'll see that on your next bill because there'll be a flat fee. But the sewer service and the water uses has additional item rolled into the usage amount. And those would be helpful if you can highlight them on the water bill. I don't know if you've got room to put them on the water bill. I know it's condensing a lot, or maybe on the back, you know, like, they were like, maybe the next bill, is the next bill gonna have the newsletter on it as well? Maybe if we can put that. Yes. Yeah, just to communicate to the residents. More information would be on the back of the water bill. Probably won't fit on the water bill side, but on the back. Okay. You said usually they are without the. No, I think we can fit it on the back. Yeah, on the back of the water bill. It would just be helpful, I think, moving forward because I think it will be a full two-month cycle. I know in other communities, when they do these water rate studies, they look at when they're gonna roll them into. And sometimes it's difficult to roll them into a bill that has old rates and new rates. Sometimes it's convenient to roll it into a bill that has a full two months. So you see the full two-month rate and not trying to figure out what's old and what's new. And again, you know, and I have to mention, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your first name. And you said that the city just throws this at us. But it is unfortunate that past administration and past council didn't act on the best interest of the city residents to look at the deficiencies of the, the poor infrastructure that we have to increase these rates. Nobody wants to be the bad guy, but unfortunately, this correct board had to be because there was no other way. So I do apologize, but moving forward, we hope to be more transparent and better communicating with you. Thank you.
Councilman Scarborough?
I kind of want to piggyback to about transparency side of that. I do apologize. I do post that as well. Also,
Also, when it comes to making that decision on voting yes for this board to make this pass, we had to, right, when you see a black and white sheet that shows you you're gonna need millions of dollars in the hole years to come, you can't do that, right, it's just like your house or anything else in your bank account, you have to make that decision. And it was unfortunate, it goes a lot on this council that we had to rip, band it off, and none, no one wanted it for this to pass. The amount of conversation that happened, the amount of talks to try and change it, to move stuff, to see where it could happen, it had to happen, because if we didn't have it, if this didn't happen, we'd be ten times worse five years down the road, and going to you guys again in five years and saying, hey, your bill is actually gonna be two times the amount. I don't think that's, uh, friskfully responsible. So, I know it sucks to be the board that have to do it, but at the end of the day, it had to happen. I do appreciate you guys coming out, I appreciate you guys' concerns, and thank you guys.
Alright, first of all, congratulations, Councilwoman Harris, on a great art fair. Thank you, it was wonderful.
And Chris.
Wow, and Chris.
And Chris.
And Chris, and Chris, I apologize, and the whole Elginak Lions, I love you. And we do thank you for your, your, your donation for the pool furniture, that is wonderful. And I, you know, I, I, I definitely, we had two months of meetings on this, so I think maybe we thought in our heads that everybody knew, because we all knew what was happening. Um, the city went out and had a study done. We hired a professional company to do a water rate study. They evaluated every single pipe in our system. And we have over ninety million dollars worth of infrastructure that's gonna need to be replaced based on, in a certain period. They suggested that the increase was, on average, gonna be sixty dollars a month. Every single one of us up here said, there's nothing we can do. We cannot do that, we, you have to go back to the drawing board, we can't, we cannot put that on, we cannot do sixty dollars a month. They went back, adjusted some things, they were, basically, we put off a lot of water projects. We have, if we didn't do any kind of adjustment, our water fund would be six hundred thousand dollars in the deficit next year, and run out of money by twenty twenty-seven. We adopted a, a sewage plant from the county that they didn't give us any capital improvement fund with it. And I know these are all excuses, and they don't help our bottom line, and I understand it. You know, I have a senior citizen mom that lives on social security, and if you think that there's somebody that I had to explain the water bills to, that was awful, and you think I haven't heard about it for two months from her? Because we, we hear you, we understand, and we didn't want to do this. If there was another way, any other way, we would have done it, I promise you.
And to help, if I could. Water and sewer plants are built, are set up to be self-sustaining. And there hasn't been an increase since twenty-eleven. So this isn't just, you know, we want a bunch of money, we want a bunch of your money so we can work our projects. That's not what this is, this is so we can have an operating one. They're set up to be self-sustaining, and it's not there in any way, shape.
And I think Mr. McBride would back me up, and they cannot be, they have to be self-sustaining. Can I correct on that, Senator?
Correct.
They have to operate as a business.
Yes.
It means you can't take tax, when you have a tax, a piece of taxable property, that you can't take money out of the general fund to subsidize your water plant. So, again, the communication, it would, it would fall on, I, I believe it would fall on every one of us, because we could have been more out there. I, you know, summer gets away, that fiscal year starts July first, you know, it's, it was, it was, it was a crazy couple months for us, so I think we lived it so much, we, we thought everybody knew.
I'll back that up.
We lived it for two months straight.
Especially as I was looking on Facebook months ago, seeing everyone talk about it. Me personally, I thought it-
Yeah, I thought it, but, we apologize. And I don't think I have anything else to give, except for, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn at number fifty-four.
Six seventy-four?
Yeah.
All in four, all in favor?
Aye. Aye. Thank you, everybody.